All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Welcome to today's formal meeting of the Phoenix City Council for June 4th, 2014. We already had citizen comments, so now we will begin our meeting with an invocation. That invocation will be led by Reverend Patrick Stout from Community Church of Hope. Reverend Stout, please come forward. Everyone else, please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Spirit of wisdom, we are glad to be in this place today to work together in cooperation. I pray that you will bless this body to be able to work with one another in wisdom and in truth. May God bless you and keep you. May God's face shine upon you and give you peace. Amen.
Before the regular formal meeting of the City Council, we are going to have a quick meeting of the Tatum Ranch Community Facilities District Board, which is us. So I will now call to order the meeting of the Tatum Ranch Community Facilities District Board. May I have a roll call? Board Member DeCiccio. Board Member Gallego.
Here.
Board Member Gates.
Here.
Board Member Noakowski.
Here.
Board Member Pastor.
Here.
Board Member Valenzuela.
Here.
Board Member Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Waring.
Chairman Stanton.
Here.
Do we have a motion on the minutes from the July 3rd, 2013 special meeting of the Board of Directors? Vice Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Can we have a consideration, a motion on the consideration for the adoption of a resolution? Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on the adoption of the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call. Board Member DeCiccio. Board Member Gallego.
Yes.
Board Member Gates.
Yes.
Board Member Noakowski. Board Member Pastor.
Yes.
Board Member Valenzuela. Board Member Williams.
Yes.
Vice Chair Waring. Chairman Stanton. Yes. We are completed with our business of the Tatum Ranch Community Facilities District, so that portion of this meeting is now adjourned. We now begin our formal agenda for the City Council. Could we please call the roll for our formal meeting? Councilwoman DeCiccio. Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilwoman Gates.
Here.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Valenzuela. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring. Mayor Stanton.
Here.
Judy, would you, Judy is our interpreter. Would you please introduce yourself for the audience, for members who may need to utilize your services?
Buenas tardes, me llamo Judy, soy intérprete de español. Si alguien necesita el equipo, por favor venga conmigo o con el personal de la ciudad. Gracias.
Thank you, Judy. Next, the City Clerk will read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G-5921 through G-5931, S-40848 and S-40928 through S-40954, and resolutions number 21230 through 21232.
Thank you very much. Next is Boards and Commissions. Is there a motion on the mayor's boards and commission nominations?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion on, excuse me, any opposed? Passes unanimously. Next is City Councilmember Boards and Commission nominations. Do we have a motion on the City Councilmember Boards and Commission nominations?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Councilman DeCiccio, did you join us by phone?
I did, thank you, Mayor.
We're about to vote on the Boards and Commissions for Councilmembers. So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We do have individuals that are here to be sworn in for their service on Boards and Commissions. We have one. It is quality, not quantity, today. Louisa Stark is here to be sworn in, so I'll come over and swear you in, and then afterwards The City Manager, I think this makes it official. Louisa has served on every board and commission possible that we have. I think you may have broken the record, and if we form new committees, she'll serve on that too. But thank you for your service to the people of Phoenix, Louisa. We really appreciate your commitment to the city. All right, I think we're going to, is this appropriate time to take things out of order, or should we do it later? Can we take some, the item out of order dealing with the zoning case at 19th Street and Indian School? I think Councilwoman Pastor, out of respect for members of the public that are here on that item, want to take that item out of order. Is that correct, Councilwoman? Is this a, okay. So what number is that?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
So can we take seventy-one out of order? Any other requests to take items out of order today by members of the council? Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Motion to suspend the rules and change the order of business to permit item seventy-one be heard first.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number seventy-one will now be the item that will be heard before this council. Item number seventy-one is a proposed rezoning at 19th Street and Indian School Road. Councilwoman, it's your pleasure, unlike, it's your district, so how you want to proceed? You want to have a short staff presentation, and then hear from, there's three or four cards here. That's one option. We go right to the cards, whatever you'd like to do.
I would like actually the public or the public first hear the cards, and then Alan. Or would you want to present first?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay, so let's see. We have, let's see, it looks like I've got two people in favor of, and I assume, I know you've been working very hard on this to try to find a compromise, so I assume it means they're in favor of the proposed compromise. And we have one individual who is opposed, Paul Barnes, and I'm not sure if it's based upon the original recommendation of the staff and village or the compromise, but let's hear from.
I just wanted to make sure I had it changed.
Absolutely, thank you so much. Lee Bozenbach, are you here? Did you, would you wish to come testify? Up to two minutes. And before, before you do testify, I know the Councilwoman's office has been working with neighborhood leaders from the immediate area, as well as neighborhood leaders representing neighborhood interests around the city, as well as the representative of the developer. Are you aware of the proposed compromise?
Yes.
Okay, please, so you're going to testify on that?
Yes.
Please, go ahead.
My name's Lee Bozenbach. I live at 19th Street in Montecito, which is in the neighborhood, and I've been working with my neighbors on this whole development, and I appreciate every councilperson who's taken the opportunity to meet with us. First and foremost, I want to say that this is a compromise reached between the community and the developer, and since this site is under the Squaw Peak Parkway specific plan, I want to make sure that no other neighborhoods, that their specific plans are set aside based on the decisions and compromises that we've made. Each community is different, each site is different, and this one, we have deemed appropriate for our location, and we're happy to have it coming into our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, so you want to make sure it got on the record that this is not meant in any way to affect any other specific plan.
Correct.
In your neighborhood or anywhere else in the city.
Correct.
A point well taken.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul Barnes, you wish to provide testimony next, and then we'll hear from Jerry Jacobs.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the councils. I said from the back there, I do support the compromise, and there's several individuals I'd like to applaud that have worked so hard on this project. First of all, obviously, I applaud Councilwoman Pastor's office for supporting the R4 compromise that was recommended by the Petersview Neighborhood Association. And I applaud Guadalupe Perez Carrillo and the residents of the neighborhood for organizing so quickly and so efficiently, as well as recognizing the political reality of how rezoning currently works in the city of Phoenix. I applaud Lee Bozenbach for preparing one of the best neighborhood presentations I have ever seen, that presents clear, compelling evidence for anyone wishing to be objective as to why the applicable rezoning application should not be approved. I'm talking there about the original application. I applaud Judy Leon for exercising such care and concern for the residents of the trailer park that will be displaced by the pending rezoning. I applaud, this is going to surprise people, I applaud Catherine Sprague for arguing so persistently regarding the aesthetics on the project, and the project clearly is out of character with the neighborhood, and this is why she's been so persistent. In closing, I feel that this case represents a great deal that is wrong, great deal that is wrong with rezoning in the city of Phoenix in regards to infill projects of budding, long-standing single-family neighborhoods, and I'll take that up at a different time and a different place in detail. My last word is that I hope that Mr. Curly and his client will be able to work on the proposed setback adjacent to Catherine's project and see if that can't be increased. And again, I really appreciate all the hard work that Councilwoman Pastor's office has done on this project, they've done it several times, and I think without that and her understanding of the situation, that perhaps maybe the developer would not have been amenable to this compromise. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Mr. Barnes, Jerry Jacobs, did you wish to provide testimony? You know, but you're in favor of the compromise? Okay. So Councilwoman Pastor, it's up to you whether you want to hear any kind of staff presentation at this point. Looks like all the people that came to testify were aware of the compromise and gave testimony based upon it. So you, and you have the, the staff sheet about proposed motions as well. Go ahead.
Correct. So I would like Alan to go through this process, because it's been a long process, and we, I am, I'm a process person, so I'm glad that we got to where we, we got to into the compromise. So Alan, if you could please.
Sure. Mayors, councilmembers, this is a rezoning request for 7.03 acres. You see up on the aerial slide there exactly where the parcel is. It is surrounded by residential to the north and to the east, and then single-family residential, and to the south is commercial and office uses, and then to the, to the west is more single-family residential. On the next slide, you can see the close-up area, one more slide up here, you'll see the zoning sketch map that shows the surrounding zoning patterns for the area. So you see the site has a mix of C3, C2, fairly intense commercial zoning, and then R3 multifamily already on the back of the parcel. So that is one of the reasons why this project is, is proposed to be supported by staff, that it already has some intense zoning on it. The next slide shows the site plan for it, and originally they did come in and request R5 zoning and a maximum height of 56 feet, and through the process, you know, the next slide shows the elevations. So this is the main building that sits in the middle of the parcel where the heights would have, would have gone up to 56 feet as originally proposed, and the next slide shows the carriage units that surround it on 19th Street Devonshire. Now they're going to shift some around to 20th Street as well. Those carriage units have a maximum height of 22 feet. With that, the next slide, I believe, shows some items that Councilwoman Pastor was integral in putting together meetings to work with the neighbors and the community to have neighborhood meetings on February 18th, May 10th, May 17th, May 27th, then again on May 28th, and then May 30th, and then May 31st through 61, residents and staff worked on issues through the weekend to make this happen, and then also on 62 and 63. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and go from there.
Councilwomen, questions or comments? Any questions, members of the council? Councilwoman.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank Petersview Neighborhood Association. They became very active in this process, and I'm glad, not necessarily wanted this to be the process of how to really get the neighborhood engaged, but they got engaged. And so I want to thank Guadalupe, who I met, I think, a month, a month and a half ago when she came to a meeting and said, hey, this is a project coming up, and I wanted to see what the process is. Lee and Julia for being advocates for your neighborhood, but also for the mobile home area, and Catherine. And Catherine, throughout this whole process, I want to acknowledge her because throughout this whole process, everybody had a voice, and everybody was heard at many different time periods and, and meetings. And so I also like to thank Gigi and Paul for your efforts in, in being advocates for neighborhood and the Neighborhood Association. So I also like to thank you in still providing a vision and the guidance of quality neighborhoods. Alan, thank you, because I got to you and said, we got to, we got to see how, what we can do. So thank you for all your efforts, and also my staff. I just want to let you know that within, what was it, Tuesday, I believe, from last Tuesday to now, we have been working fast and furious to at least get to a compromise. And we all work together. I wanted to thank the developer and Mr. Curly and everybody else that was part of it, because as I had stated in the neighborhood meeting, neighbors are, developers and establishments are part of the neighborhood, and they do bring economic development. And it's just a matter of getting into a room and really working hard to get to where everybody has a win-win. So I do want to thank the developer in, in also going through this process. They're not, as many of you know, I'm new to this council, and this process was probably a whole new process for city staff and developers and neighborhoods in the sense of how I wanted certain things. From the very beginning, when I first met with Mr. Curly and the applicant, I was very strong and very clear that I wanted the neighborhood's voice to be heard and to work together, but I also wanted to make sure our residents that live in the mobile home area that were going to be displaced, to be taken care of in the sense of, with dignity and respect, and also have a plan in moving them into a new area. So I also want to thank the owner of the mobile home park for going way far beyond than what I thought was going to happen. And so with that, at the end of the day, I also like to thank my staff, who literally, Monday, I had, there was a neighborhood meeting called together Monday, and then Tuesday, there was a zoning, a planning, a village, where we cleared some things up in the village. We had to clear some items up in the village. But last night, I said, I am still not comfortable, I want to know where, where our mobile home residents are on this. And so my staff went out last night at 6:00 and went door-to-door and spoke to all the residents that were home, and got a report, and we were able to, at 1:30, speak to the owner of the park, of the mobile home area, and say, here are some of my concerns, and we were able to work things out. What I also want you to know is that there is a contract between the developer and the owner of the park, that all the items that were given to the homeowners will be followed through. So I want to make that assurance to our neighbors that we're very concerned about that. So I'm very proud of all the work that everyone did, and I am going to make a motion to deny, as filed, and approve R4 per the memo from Alan Stevenson dated June, June 4th, 2014, and adopt the related ordinance.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any additional comments by members of this council? Mayor?
A quick one. Mayor?
Councilman, go right ahead.
DeCiccio? Mayor?
Go right ahead, Councilman.
Oh, yeah, I think, I just want to thank Councilwoman Pastor for all the hard work you put into this. I mean, you may be new to the council, but you handled this like a true veteran, and you put together what could have been a very ugly case, and one that could have been just really tough for everybody, and was able to, with all that hard work you put into it, was, was able to make it easy for everybody to work together. That had the potential to be a very tough one, and you just made it look very easy. So congratulations, Councilwoman Pastor, for putting this together and making it easy for the rest of the council as well, and for protecting the rights of the neighbors and the individuals that live in that area, and at the same time, recognizing the fact that this does bring in economic development, brings in a good project to a community. Congratulations to everybody.
Thank you very much. Other comments from this council? Councilman Valenzuela?
Actually, all I was going to do is commend Councilwoman Pastor and her team. I agree. I think, you know, the, the hard work was, it was evident. Every time you talk with someone from city staff or anyone who's working on whatever side of the, of the situation or the issue, it was clear that Councilwoman Pastor was committed and speaking with everyone, bringing everyone together, and, you know, I mean, you know, Laura is a really good friend, so on top of it all, I'm just really proud of the way she, you handled this, Councilwoman, and, and I agree, you handled it like a true veteran, and, and I certainly learned, you know, as someone who's very process-oriented also, and, you know, who works in the community and worked with everyone who, you know, who would allow me to, you know, it was, it was just great to see, and congratulations.
I want to make a clarification.
Please.
On my, on my motion, it's per the revised memo.
Well, in that case, I don't.
So can I get a, it's per the revised memo.
We got it. It's for the record, and we're, we're good to go. So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments? I also just, as Mayor, want to say, you and your team, Councilwoman, just rolled up your sleeves last week, and it's been very, very impressive to, to watch. I also want to say thank you to Lee and Guadalupe and the other leader from the immediate area who really did a great job advocating for your neighborhood, the interest of your neighborhood. The work you did over the last few weeks and months is really going to set the right, I believe, the right message for other development, redevelopment projects that are really coming. So congratulations, Councilwoman, you and your team. Congratulations, leaders of that immediate neighborhood. Great work. Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next, we'll go back to our regular order of agenda. Next item on that agenda is our budget items? Do we need a suspension of the rules for the budget items? All right, so if we suspend the rules so that we can hear the budget items, does any of, Vice Mayor, do you want to make that motion?
Motion to suspend the rules and change the order of business to permit the holding of public hearings and adoption of the 2014 to 2019 capital improvement program and the tentative 2014-2015 budget items.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. The next item will be then item number two, which is a public hearing on the proposed 2014 through 19 capital improvement program. I will now open the public hearing. Are there any cards on that item? We have no cards on that item, so is anyone here to provide testimony on item number two, public hearing, 2014-19 capital improvement program, going once, going twice? The public hearing is now closed. Item number three is adoption of the 2014 through 19 capital improvement program. Do we have a motion on item number three?
Motion to approve item three.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments by members of this council? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Item number four is a public hearing on the proposed 2014-15 annual budget of the city of Phoenix. I will now open that public hearing. Do we have any cards on item number four? We have no cards in the public on item number four. Is anyone in the audience here to provide testimony on the proposed adoption of the tentative 2014-15 annual budget? Anyone here to provide testimony on that item? Going once, going twice. The public hearing is now closed. Our next item on the agenda is item number five, adoption of the tentative 2014-15 annual budget of the, of the city of Phoenix. Do we have a motion from members of this council on item number five?
Mayor, I would move to approve the tentative 14-15 annual budget ordinance, S-40928.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. We have comments from members of the council? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
No.
Noakowski.
No.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Councilman DeCiccio, this is the, the proposed annual budget, 2014-15. You voted yes. Did you intend to vote yes?
No, I'm sorry, I thought it was the capital. I couldn't barely hear.
No problem, I apologize.
No, the answer's no.
Okay, so Councilman DeCiccio is a no on that, on that item, and so I think the item passes on a five to four vote. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the tentative 2014-15 capital funds budget. Do we have an item, an motion on number, item number six?
I approve. Mayor, I would make the motion to approve and adopt the tentative 14, 2014-2015 capital funds budget ordinance, S-40929.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Comments by members of this council on the capital funds budget? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, that item passes unanimously. Next portion of today's agenda will be revolving, involving liquor license applications. Vice Mayor, do we have a omnibus motion on liquor licenses?
We do, but one second. Okay, so eight to 23. Yes, I move items eight to 20, number eight to 23.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Approval on items eight through 23. I have some cards here, not wishing to speak. I'm going to make sure they're all in favor of the proposed motion. Mark Roth on item number eight, Ben Oraha on nine, Mary Abrota on item 15 from the Okatío Glen Neighborhood Association. Thank you for taking the time to attend today. Good to see you. David Moreno, you did not mark if you are in favor or opposed item 19, David. Are you in favor of it?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Favor, okay, perfect. And then on item 21, the applicant, I assume is in favor, is Punya Corayla. How did I pronounce that correctly, or close to it? Thank you for, are you in favor of the proposed item, I believe? Excellent. We have a motion on items eight through 23. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 24 on today's agenda. Councilman Valenzuela, how would you like to proceed? And we do have a few cards on the item, you want to staff report first?
This is for twenty-four.
Item twenty-four.
Right. Mayor, I know we have some of our neighborhood leaders here with us, we have the applicant here, the applicant has asked if we would continue this, giving the applicant an opportunity to meet with the neighborhood leaders, after discussing this with the neighborhood leaders, everyone is okay with that, so I'd like to make a motion to continue.
We have a motion and a second to continue. Mary, are you okay with the continuance? Caitlin, are you okay with the continuance? You're opposed to the item? So the, the motion on the table is not to either in, in favor or opposed, it's a continuance so that the applicant have a time, will have a chance to meet with those, particularly in opposition, including yourself, and then we would hear the item substantively at a future meeting, are you okay with a short continuance to give the applicant time to meet with you? If not, it's perfectly fine, you just, now would be the time to come testify, but only on the issue of whether we should grant them, how many, how much time? Went to what, what, next meeting?
Yeah.
What?
June what? Eighteenth.
So it would be, it would continue until June eighteenth? He'll give you a second if you want to talk it over, that's fine.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but in this moment, I feel-
Would you like, maybe you should-
Yeah, please come to the microphone over here at the right, I apologize.
I'm sorry, my name is Cotolino Pritsku, it's the first time when I come on this kind of meeting.
Thank you for being here, pleasure here.
Sorry for my English, it's my second language.
No problem.
I live in the bad neighborhood, everybody know the route of Twenty-seventh Avenue have an increased rate of crime, Club Silverado, it's very bad for our neighborhood, and they get a chance to talk with me, instead of that, in the last three weekends, there was twice gunshots behind my house. I, I feel afraid for my life in this moment.
Okay, so right, the, the question on the table that we're going to be discussing is whether to delay this vote for a two-week period, and if you're, if you're, it sounds like you're opposed to us doing that, you want us to vote today and get it over with?
I, I don't see why we have to oppose, I already submitted two complaints to the City of Phoenix, nobody contacted me, nobody did anything, I, whenever I called the police to disperse them, three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning, they, they just let them go.
Okay.
So I don't see why we keep going like that.
Excellent. Thank you.
The first time, when they approved this restaurant, they blame on me why I didn't come to say, to oppose for the restaurant to open in the first place, but I didn't know what it's going to be. We have two other bars in the area, we have a lot of kids in the neighborhood, apartments, I own a care home with people with traumatic brain injury, I live just fifty feet away of them. They broke the window of my handicap van, and they said they are not responsible for them customers, every weekend, it's a nightmare. I don't know why we have to go longer with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to make sure it's clear, the motion that the councilman representing the area has made isn't in favor or opposed, he wanted the opportunity for representative of the restaurant and bar to meet with the nearby neighbors, obviously including you, I'm guessing based upon your testimony that the councilman and his professional staff will be meeting with you to talk about some of the neighborhood issues, including crime issues that are going on in your, in your neighborhood, but right now, we're going to be voting on whether to continue the item for a couple of weeks, and your testimony is now for the record, so you can leave it at that, or if you're able to come back in two weeks and again provide live testimony, that would be very, very helpful, thank you for being, for coming down, I appreciate it. So the motion on the table is to continue this for two weeks. I should also note that the applicant is here, but not wishing to speak, Lorena Carballo.
Mayor?
Councilman, please.
Actually, according to the note here, I misspoke, it's actually July second, would be the continuing date, and to the gentleman who just spoke, yes, we will be, we will be reaching out, we have been working closely with your police commander, we meet with your police commander on a monthly basis, it's a standing meeting, and, you know, along with your neighborhood leaders, and obviously, you know, crime prevention and suppression must remain our number one priority, so we'd love to sit down with you, out of, so, but I'll tell you what, I understand that it could be difficult to come out to these meetings, especially, you know, in the middle of the day, we will be sure to, to keep your, your comments on the record, Kelly Dalton, who's my chief of staff, who will make her way over to you to exchange information, you know, we'll do that, out of respect for the neighborhood leaders that we've had a discussion with today, I still would like to make a motion for a continuance on the second, I ask that the applicant not waste time and meet with these neighborhood leaders, they're very organized in this part of the district, and frankly, some of the most organized neighborhood leaders in the city, don't waste your time, please, and, and meet with our neighborhood leaders, sir, this is not a motion to approve, this motion is just to, to continue.
I know, but they already started, I mean, I think I'm sure that-
No, sir, that's not.
Well, we'll ask the professional staff, after, you know, through the motions, they'll maybe have a chance to speak with Mr. Pritsku, and explain the process, and also have a chance to meet, have him meet with the appropriate law enforcement folks to talk about some crime issues in the neighborhood. Okay, so the motion is a continuance till July second. I assume the second, secondur is okay with that change?
I'm fine with it.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, so that item will be back on our agenda in just a few weeks. Next item on the agenda is item number twenty-five, which is a ratification of planning commission action, do we have a motion on item number twenty-five?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. So I have a few cards here, not wishing to speak, I have Ralph Frobe, who is, he supports denial, and I'm confused, the motion was in favor of planning commission action, Mr. Frobe, are you opposed to the planning commission action?
No. I don't want to go even through.
Okay.
I've just been rejected twice already, I hope I can go here too.
Okay, the motion, I believe, is in favor of the planning commission action, so if you disagree with the planning commission action-
I'm not, sir.
Mr. Stevenson, bring clarity to my obfuscation.
Mayor, members of the council, the, the planning commission recommended denial, so this is a ratification of the denial, which is why he's supportive.
Okay. Thank you so much. So you support the motion made by Councilman Williams, John D'Assanio, also in the same position, Linda Colino is also in favor of the motion there for denial, which was supported by the planning commission, we got it. I am clearly more confused than you, but now clarity has been brought to the situation. So we, so Councilman Williams has made a motion to support planning commission action, which is denial, got it, all right, we have a motion, do we, we had a second? All, is the roll call? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, that's good news, all right, good. All right, so next item is item twenty-six through twenty-eight, now is the time and place for the public hearing regarding items twenty-six through twenty-eight, the proposed Broadway Road, Avenida Rio Salado project, areas three A, six A, and six C, annexations. I will now open the public hearing, are there any cards on items twenty-six through twenty-eight? No cards on twenty-six or twenty-eight, is anyone here to provide testimony on twenty-six through twenty-eight, we will not be voting on these items, is that correct? I think we're just taking a public hearing, okay. Any, is there any member of the public here to provide public testimony on the proposed annexations for the Avenida Rio Salado project, going once, going twice, today's public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda will be our G ordinances, S ordinances, and resolutions, and we'll first start out with a omnibus motion if we can, city clerk, are we ready?
Okay, Mayor, we have cards on items thirty-eight, forty-six through forty-eight, fifty-four, I'm sorry, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-seven.
All right, with that, Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I move that items twenty-nine through sixty-two, sorry, I move that items twenty-nine through sixty-two being ordinances number G dash fifty-nine twenty-one through G fifty-nine twenty-eight, S dash forty-eighty-four eight, S dash forty-ninety-three one through S dash forty-ninety-five four, and resolution twenty-one twenty-three one be adopted, except items thirty-seven, thirty-eight in its entirety, and we have conflicts, I think, on AE, AF, and AG.
Yep.
Forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-three, fifty-four, and fifty-seven.
Okay, that's our omnibus motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments by members of this council, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item is item number thirty-seven, do we have a motion on thirty-seven?
Move item thirty-seven be adopted.
Second. We have a motion, a second, Councilman Gallego, do you want to declare a conflict?
No, I have a few comments on thirty-seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's comments, I apologize. Okay, so the motion is in favor of thirty-seven, we have a second, Councilman Gallego, what are your comments?
Item thirty-seven has to do with our city's cranes and some of the, can you hear me?
No.
You cannot hear me.
Maybe move closer.
All right, I'll speak more loudly.
There you go, there you go.
Thank you. During our budget hearings, we had many suggestions from employees, and one of them was to look at the crane program for efficiencies, that we had some cranes which were used for a few hours per year, and that they might, we might be able to share cranes between departments, and I'm very happy that we're going to be doing a, something like a shared motor pool with our cranes, so the staff is looking at now heavy equipment, and seeing if we can share those materials between departments and gain efficiencies that way, so very glad that we're being responsive to the comments we receive from our employees, and that we continue to look for efficiencies, so thanks, staff, for working with me on this item, and making sure we're doing a good job with the taxpayers' money, so appreciate the ability to study this further, and make sure we are doing a good job for both our employees and taxpayers.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman, and that was your movement that got this going in the right direction, thank you for doing that. So we have a motion on thirty-seven, we have a second, those comments noted, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item number thirty-eight, why don't we do all of it, holding out the, the items in which we have conflicts, or to vote separately on, so let's do, a motion on thirty-eight.
I move item thirty-eight, holding out AE, AF, and AG.
Second. We have a motion on thirty-eight, holding out the items noted by the Vice Mayor. Mr. Vint, Pat Vint, you have up to two minutes to provide testimony, this is on our payment ordinance.
Yes, I am Pat Vint, and as you noticed, came in late, was held up, but this item thirty-eight here, it always just gets slipped by as if it's nothing, it's only thirty-seven million eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars that you're all going to say, it's okay, city staff supposedly knows what they're doing, but like I say, I have to bring in what happened, why I'm not here earlier, we had a meeting with Ray Dobalina from the Streets Department, and it went overtime, but we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars there that the city give away, and give our property away, a main thoroughfare, and you act as if it's nothing, just whatever the staff says, it's okay. It's not okay, someone has to be accountable and responsible, and Ray Dobalina and myself, we couldn't agree, so I said we're going to court, every one of you will be, will be summoned into court, whatever they do, because you're all part of it. You just sat up there as if you're twelve gods or something, and whatever the staff said, it's all right, it's not all right, someone, starting with the mayor down, has to answer to the public. In that chain of command, you still haven't tied the public to your position, to Ed Zirker's position, and it's the previous city managers that made this mistake, and they just quit, walk off three or four hundred thousand in their pocket, quarter of a million dollars each for retirement the rest of their life, and it's a disaster, so is that, we didn't get any warning of another few seconds, that's it?
You can finish your point if you want.
So anyway, you're going to have to start doing your job, and accepting accountability and responsibility, Ed Zirker kind of got started last week, and asked a few people to call me and have meetings, Ray Dobalina's the only one, but the neighborhood of Planning and Zoning Department, which there was an individual here a little bit ago, that he doesn't know what the hell he's doing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vint, thank you for the testimony. All right, so we have a motion in favor of item thirty-eight, with the certain items held out, we have a second, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, Vice Mayor, next items?
Move item AE for approval.
Well, you can do all but once, I think, right?
Okay, and she'll just, okay, move item AE, AF, and AG for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second, Councilman Gallego?
I'd like to declare a potential conflict on items AE, AF, and AG.
Thank you very much, we have a motion, second, Councilman Gallego noted a potential conflict, and will not be participating in the vote, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item, Vice Mayor?
I move item forty-six for approval.
Second. All right, forty-six, Mr. Clark, you wanted to provide testimony on, just a second here? All right, so, Mr. Clark, this is a ward of housing opportunities for persons with HIV/AIDS, job readiness, employment services contract, up to two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I just want to make it quick, as a resident of Phoenix, I just want to congratulate the City of Phoenix for, after all of the stigma and the discrimination that took place against people with HIV/AIDS, for, for your hopefully passing this, so that they can be treated fairly and have employment, after so many millions have died, and there was just a movie on about how people with HIV/AIDS, all of the politicians didn't want to listen, they ignored it, till a whole, a lot, almost a whole generation of people were lost, so I thank you, and I strongly support this, and I hope you'll vote yes on it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark, we have a motion, we have a second, do we have, we have a motion, yeah, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item forty-seven, Vice Mayor?
Move approval item forty-seven.
Second, a motion, a second, Mr. Clark, you want to provide testimony, item number forty-seven?
No.
Not on this one, okay, roll call.
DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
No.[1758.02]
Yes, so the item passes seven-two, forty-eight, Vice Mayor?
Move approval item forty-eight.
We have a motion on forty-eight, we have a second?
Second.
We have, Mr. Clark, you wish to provide testimony, this item, this has to do with the food banks, food bank contracts?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Leonard Clark, and live in this beautiful city of Phoenix. I, I do, of course, want you to pass this, but I just want also you to recognize, and our fellow citizens to recognize, that it's been reduced twenty-five percent because we were wrong in saying we must repeal the taxes, all taxes are bad, and as a society, we just can't have taxes. Now, when it comes time for people, not deadbeats, not people who aren't willing to work, who need food, the residents of Phoenix, those places, Saint Mary's Food Bank and the rest, supply food to people who are hungry in Phoenix, are gonna have less because we don't have this tax. So we must not, I hope, succumb to this whole Goldwater stigma, you know, kill the baby in the bathtub, horrible as it sounds, mentality, that we should have no taxes, because now this is what we get, reduced funding, reduced food for the hungry of Phoenix, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, passes unanimously, next item, Vice Mayor?
Move approval item fifty-three.
We have a motion on fifty-three, do we have a second? Fifty-three. Is agreement with Xerox for data entry services. Ms. Barker, did you provide, provide testimony on this item? Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Oh, that one's not on?
Yeah. How about this? All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Diane Barker, District Seven. I'd just like to make a statement, it's been my experience in dealing with the Supreme Court in this, and it was an issue with Scottsdale, that you really need to watch what is on that record there. And I think that, I've been told that maybe the city courts knows this, that if the person finds an objection on there, they need to work through the courts to get that, you just can't get the Supreme Court to change anything on there. But I think as far as Xerox goes, they owe it more, they were giving the money to Xerox, and then Xerox has a collection agency. The collection agency, you can't get a hold of them, and I'm not the only one that complains about that. But what I'm saying here, I'd like the City of Phoenix, we've got a good judge over there to make sure that the records are straight, and that the procedure to correct it is not one of these long-drawn administrative things, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Item fifty-three, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, item fifty-four?
Move approval item fifty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on fifty-four, Mr. Leonard Clark, you want to provide testimony on fifty-four? No problem, that's all right. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes, next item, I believe is item fifty-seven, Vice Mayor?
Move approval item fifty-seven.
Second.
Motion to second, Mr. Clark, do you wish to provide testimony on fifty-seven? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and, Mayor and councilmembers, and as a citizen of Phoenix, I just want to thank the family of Detective Hobbs and all of the Phoenix Police and the Fire, because they're just like the tax collectors sometimes, everybody loves to hate them, but when we need them, they can't get there fast enough, and they give their lives to protect us. And I, there's not, no expression in words, but all I can say is thank you as a citizen of Phoenix, and thank you for keeping our, my family safe, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Valenzuela. Williams.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton.
Yes. Next, I think we're on the new business, is that correct?
Move approval item sixty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on sixty-three. Mr. Clark, do you wish to provide testimony on sixty-three? That is notice of the legally required public hearing on the property tax.
I promise you, Mayor and Council, and citizens of Phoenix, this is the last time I'm going to speak today, but I do hold it as a sacred honor. As you know, in China, they have a different view of letting their citizens speak. Anyways, I just want to thank you, and I think it's a good state law, because this property tax, I need to educate myself more, and many of my fellow residents, about what is our Phoenix property tax. And these two hearings that are coming up in June, in July, where we're going to, it looks like, increase them, we all need to educate ourselves on it, our primary tax, our secondary. So I, I'm gonna be right along with the rest of my fellow citizens, watching this, what's happening, why will we probably be paying more in our property taxes, and without condemning, but we need to learn about them, myself included, I'll be studying it, and hopefully can attend those next two future meetings, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark, for that testimony. So a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, sixty-four, Vice Mayor?
Mayor? Could I?
Of course.
As city manager, I, I don't want the public, we're not raising property taxes, I haven't heard that as part of any of this process. Is that so?
Mayor, Councilman Williams, the answer, as everything is with property taxes, is complex. The property tax rate will not be raised, it will remain at a dollar eighty-two. The primary property tax will decrease, and the secondary property tax will increase.
I, I just want to know, is the bill gonna go up?
But the tax rate is a dollar eighty-two.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Just for further clarification?
Vice Mayor?
The actual vote on the rate isn't until July second, this is not it.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct, this simply is the state-required action to set the hearing for July second.
All right, next item, Vice Mayor, sixty-four?
Item, I might take item sixty-four, sixty-six, and sixty-seven.
I think so.
Move item sixty-four, sixty-six, and sixty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any comments, members of the council, any cards? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, item sixty-five?
Move item sixty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Councilman Gallego, you had comments on the proposed bus service changes, two thousand fourteen?
Yes, so I think this proposal is good news, we're gonna be adding service in the